Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Hanifa Shabazz, President of Wilmington City Council. Welcome to the City of Wilmington Virtual Town Hall. It's been such a while since we get a chance to see each other, and I just want to send you some love and hugs. That's the best I could do. But again, I would like to thank you all for coming and thank you for joining us participating today. I would like to thank the mayor, Mayor Mike Pizicki, Councilman Chris Johnson, Maria Matos, Terry Lawler, and Mary Ann Kenville-Moore for agreeing to participate today. I want to also thank all of our central workers. There really aren't enough words to express our appreciation for your steadfast and amazing work to keep our city protected, healthy, and safe. Please know that you and your families have our gratitude and respect. And to those families touched by the virus, our prayers are with you. Today, we want to share with you what Wilmington City Government is doing as we all are facing this unprecedented pandemic. In such a time of uncertainty, it is important that you know how we are working on your behalf to meet the needs of our great city. We all have been affected by the coronavirus for more than 90 days now. And it sometimes seems unreal. We are experiencing multiple issues. The health issues of those suffering from the coronavirus. And let's not forget, for many are compounded with the trauma epidemic of violence and as well as other underlying health issues before this virus hit. We people are now experiencing challenges with their finances, issues caused by job layoffs and businesses closing. And for many, the ability to pay our rent or mortgage simply by groceries has become stressful because our money must be stretched in so many different directions. Well, we need to hear from you, just how you've been affected by this pandemic. We want to hear your questions and concerns. We also want your input and recommendations as we build solutions to meet the needs of city residents. We have great questions and comments from you from our first town hall meeting on May 6th. And we hope that you will be engaged again today and share your thoughts and concerns. Before I introduce the mayor, I want to take a moment to remind everyone to complete the 2020 census. The federal government determines funding allocations based on the census, and we cannot afford to miss out on much needed resources once we finally enter the recovery phase of this pandemic. If you have not already, please go to 2020census.gov and complete your 2020 census. It is now a pleasure to introduce Mayor Pizicki to share updates from the city. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm pleased to be with you today. I must tell you how impressed I was with the last session that we had a week ago. I was especially impressed with the response of the public, their interest, their understanding of the issues. And you could tell that by just listening to the questions. Very informed. And it was very reassuring to know that we had the public so involved in an issue that's so important to all of us. At that time, I talked a little bit about one of our primary challenges in the city of Wilmington for those of us responsible for running the city. This, in this case, the most important issue for us is the budget because we have to pay for our government. We have to figure out where the money's coming from. And what has been most striking about this particular pandemic, the impact that it has had on our employment in this country, what it has done to revenues at states, counties, and cities throughout the entire country. And the city of Wilmington is no exception. We have a wage tax. When people aren't working, we don't get paid a wage tax. And this very severely impacts our budget and our ability to pay our bills. We are not going to borrow money to balance our budget. We're going to budget responsibly. And so the big challenge, as I talked about a week ago, was how do we forecast the unknowable? That is just how much less money that we're going to have to deal with. And then what are the steps that we take to meet this challenge? I think my staff, the administration staff, has done an outstanding job in finance and office and management and budget of putting together a plan that has realistic projections for revenue losses and then offsets that we think are reasonable and manageable. So what we, by example, what happened is we went from a $5 million surplus in 2020. That is our fiscal year that ends June 30th this year. And before this was over, we were projecting a $3 million loss. The worst of that is it just didn't give us the money, the $8 million we would have had to carry forward to 2021. So we made those adjustments. We dealt with them. I think our folks were looking to get some reimbursements to lessen the burden of that deficit. But nonetheless, I think we'll have a deficit. Going forward to 2021, working with council, we cut almost $4 million out of the budget. We have been working very hard and being more efficient in healthcare. We had $2.5 million that was reduced from our healthcare budget. And so looking ahead, taking some available cash we have from our budget stabilization fund, we think we're going to be able to get through 2021 without any very, very deep cuts and tapping into our budget reserve, which I certainly hope we're not going to have to do. We have a few other tricks up our sleeve that we can still use without going to our budget reserve. So I feel good about it. And I'm really appreciative of the members of council who worked so hard to get us through this. Last night, the budget was presented to the Finance Committee. There was nothing, there were no major controversies. So I feel pretty good about the support that council showed for that. The next thing that the public would be interested in is this CARES Act funding that has come to the state of Delaware, an astonishing billion, $250 million, of which $323 million by virtue of the way the CARES Act was created in Washington. $322 million of it goes to Newcastle County, of which we are a part. So the governing authority, for the most part, of the distribution of those funds will be Newcastle County, County Executive, and County Council. As much as we would rather have a lot more control over those funds, this is the way, this is the way the hands were dealt to us. And we have to work with the county. The County Executive has appeared to be fair-minded about where it goes, but we just certainly want to be a big part of that discussion because the city of Wilmington has problems that are very different than Newcastle Counties or any other town in Newcastle County. So far, the state of Delaware has got a total of $1,250. Newcastle County's got $322 million. Keep in mind, by way of perspective, our total budget between operating and stewarding waters, about $250 million. For Newcastle County, their total is $300 million. So $330 million, an enormous amount of money, $322, an enormous amount of money because it's not money that you can just use for whatever you want. It's all got to be COVID-related. So there are all kinds of ways that people want to use this money. But the Attorney General's Office issued regulations, their interpretation of the regs, last week. And it's fairly, they're guardrails. I mean, you just can't go take this money and spend it on anything that you think relates to some attenuated relationship with COVID-19. The problem you have is if you take that money and you use it and you misspend it, then you gotta, then the feds have a right to come back and ask you to discourage those funds. And then we, all of a sudden, we're stuck in a hole. You've got to pay money back that we wouldn't have anymore. Another source of fundings that came up that were coronavirus-related were the DOJ, Bureau of Justice, funds that the Wilmington Police Department applied for to pay for overtime and other COVID-19-related expenses. That was $694,000, not million, thousand. And then lastly is our CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funding, of about $1,003,000, which comes through our Real Estate Housing Department each year. That's about $1,003,000. And it is used for a number of things that I think we feel comfortable with. Hopefully homelessness for one, but helping with rental assistance, helping with utility assistance, things that folks in our neighborhood need help with. And we're hoping to be able to direct that money to those purposes. One of the things that we're all going to have to deal with is what we do with the programming that typically is so supportive of our kids. And we're doing this, we're just doing this by touch right now because nobody knows. We're going to hear from Terry Lawler in a little while about schools. And she's going to tell you they've got the same problem, trying to figure out what is the right balance between making sure that our kids' health is safe, but also being realistic about some of the needs that they have. And you know, the governor just opened up, he just opened up, subject to a whole variety of regulations, our swimming pools in the state. Well, in the city, we've got to be sure that, we have to be sure it's safe for us to be opening the pools, given the limitations that have been, given the limitations that have been promulgated. But frankly, even thinking if we want to open them up, given those strict limitations, maybe, you know, maybe we just take a look what goes on here in the city and we just decide to do something differently. This is going to be a cooperative discussion between the administration and council. We need the community and council to give us your thoughts on this. I think our kids are going to wind up running around anyway. They're going to be going, we're going to have an entire summer. Here they are, all spring long, they're cooped up. And now we're going to send them into a summer where it's hot and it's hard for me to believe they're just going to stick in the house. So we ought to be thinking about what we can do so that they have a healthful summer where they wind up having some personal growth as well. We don't want them to be stifled too much, stifled physically, stifled emotionally and intellectually. It just seems unacceptable to me. But we have to figure out what we're going to be doing. We've got to figure out what we're doing with Hicks Anderson. Right now, we don't have any activities going on over there. Maybe we can think about what's the balance again? Where can get some kids in programs where they grow, but places where we're respecting the concerns we have. We have a summer youth program we do each and every year. We have summer employment program that we've got to manage this year where young kids go out and earn $10 an hour for jobs that are helping them to grow. These are all challenges that we have to deal with right now. And I will tell you that there are no easy answers. All I can say is that we are trying our very best to find that right balance so that our city is healthy and it grows economically, socially, as well. So that's kind of my overview. I'm happy to answer any questions we have in due course.
Thank you, Mayor. We will have questions and answers after everyone's finished presenting. And our next presenter will be Councilman Chris Johnson. And Mayor, as you talked about, all of the federal regulations for the CARES Act and all the things that are happening because of this pandemic we're under. Chris Johnson and I thought it was prudent for us to definitely pull together, you know, a cadre of not just the members from council, but also from your administration as well to work along with our community so we can have a very broad and inclusive perspective of how do we deal with all these regulations and how we make sure that we cover all the issues that will arise from this pandemic. And so several of the panelists that I will introduce as we continue are members of not just the city government working, COVID working group, but also the COVID Community Mobilization Group, which is comprised of about 20 different organizations that were pulled together under the leadership of the Wilmington Community Advisory Council to here, to recommend, to work it all out as to how do we address all of the various issues that are coming up from the COVID and how do we come up with solutions to address them? So I know that you would get some great ideas on how to address this with our children coming up soon. But in keeping abreast of all the federal regulations that are coming down with us, Councilman Chris Johnson will give us a presentation about the many current pieces of legislation in the federal Congress that's coming forth to possibly help us, give us some ease. Councilman Johnson?
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate you taking the time out of, you know, your day to spend with us. And we really truly need to be together as, you know, one Wilmington in order to be able to overcome this crisis. So as Council President and Mayor alluded to, a lot of this comes down to dollars and cents. And you're going to hear a lot of talk about the city's budget and revenue shortfalls. And that is a direct hit because of the, you know, work stoppages, the loss of businesses operating. And so really, when it comes to this, local governments and states look to the federal government. Because unlike most localities in most states where you have to have a balanced budget at the end of the year, the federal government has a little bit more leeway in terms of being able to create extra dollars. So the way it works is, you know, when it comes to those big pots of monies, similar to the CARES Act, we really have to lean on the federal government. So right now, there's a lot of key pieces of legislation that I just wanted to put to your attention. And you know, what my ask will be is that we help advocate for these pieces of legislation because it's going to make everyone's life a lot easier and it's going to save lives. So the first one is House Resolution 6585. This is regarding equitable data collection disclosures for COVID-19. As we've seen both locally and nationally, the communities that are most impacted by COVID-19 are Black and Brown communities. It is no different in Wilmington. It's no different in Georgetown or Seaford. You know, communities of color are being hit the hardest. So this actual compulsion, this act would make it requirement to track racial data. The problem right now is that each state has different ways to track data. For example, the state of Delaware was not tracking racial data probably until a month into this epidemic. So going forward, not only Delaware, but all states should really be looking at racial data because it is, as things start to flatten and the curve is flattening, we still have a lot of underserved communities and communities of color that are still in a crisis where spread is still high, where, you know, being able to isolate, self-isolate is not feasible. So pay attention to HR 6585. Now, the next one is kind of on the same wavelength as HR 6592, the Relief Act for states. This is a little bit different. I'm going to talk about the HEROES Act, but this actually provides additional funding for tribal nations. So it doesn't impact our local community as much, but it really does. It's in line with the fact that we need to make sure our most underserved communities are taken care of. And right now, the highest rate of infection is not New York. It's not California. It's not New Jersey. It's actually the Navajo Nation with spreads in the southwest area of this country, Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah. So again, the communities of color continue to be hit the hardest. Now, the one, probably the most important besides HR 6800 is HR 6515. And this is sponsored by Congresswoman Ilhan Omar from Minnesota and the House Democrats. This is the one that will make a big impact in all of our lives. So this is a Rent and Mortgage Counselation Act, not a forbearance such as what was included in the first original CARES Act, but this would actually be a rent forgiveness. Because what occurred in a lot of states is there was a 90-day moratorium on evictions. There was a moratorium on foreclosures. But that doesn't help solve the crisis because it just kicks the can down the road. So this act is one of the most important acts we can possibly focus on getting this passed at the federal level. Because the dollars are there and they can add relief to homeowners and renters. But we really need the funds from the federal government to make this happen. So this is very, very, very important. And almost equally as important is HR 6800, the HEROES Act, which was just passed this weekend by the House of Representatives. Now, it's expected unfortunately to fail in the Senate because the Senate leadership and the president oppose it. But the HEROES Act is central. And the tenets and the key features are that it provides local aid to state and local governments. It's about $1 trillion worth. So this is exactly what Mayor Pizicki was talking about. We have revenue shortfalls. And the funds so far under CARES Act cannot replace those shortfalls. So these funds from the HEROES Act direct money to local and state governments. This is the game changer. And so we really need to continue to push for this to get passed. Now, the bill total is about $3 trillion. So the rest of the bill provides additional hazard pay for essential workers, which is key to our hardest-working neighbors. And the act also provides, again, additional relief for consumers, for those who have been hit hard by this impact. But I cannot understate the importance of passing the HEROES Act. We were hopeful at the local level that state and local funding would be included in the first CARES Act, but it wasn't. So this is our time. So when Congress goes back to session in June, we need to press the pedal to the metal. We have to press our federal delegation and impress the, you know, local senators and local congressmen and women who are on the edge nationally, press their office, call their office. We must advocate for this revenue to come into our local government. And as we'll talk about later on during this town hall, we found many creative ways to make it work, you know, but just by the skin of our teeth. But we are certainly facing not only crisis this fiscal year, but next fiscal year. So it really is important that we get to state and local funding. And with that, we'll talk about more of these issues as the night goes on. But I just wanted to kind of give a brief recap of what we have going on. And without further ado, I believe Maria Matos from the Latin American Community Center will be educating you all on what's going on in the Black and Brown community.
Wow, I thank you. It's an honor to be introduced by our Seventh District Councilperson, Johnson. Thank you very much. Thank you for having me on this virtual town hall. It's a pleasure to be here with you. I think it's important that the city of Wilmington be recognized for coming out on Facebook Live to talk with the community so that they understand what we know, what we don't know, and share the information that we do know. As for the Latin American Community Center, in addressing the change that happened so quickly, I remember like it was yesterday, March 13th, we had to quickly adjust the way that we provide services. And, you know, when the governor announced this state of emergency, we knew immediately that something needed to happen quite fast. And one of the very first things that I reached out to Christiana Care, because I know, I mean, it's a well-known fact that people of color, the Latino community, are the ones that are tested last, receive the money last, if they're thought about at all. So I knew that it was very important that our community be tested. And immediately, I reached out to Christiana Care. And they did put a virtual clinic at one of the sites that we weren't using because I sent everybody home that was able to work from home to work from home. And that building was empty. Why not put a clinic there that people can come and talk to a physician virtually? And the services are both in English and Spanish and people can be tested if they need testing. The other thing, that was a very strong partnership. And I do appreciate Christiana Care for thinking outside the box and having the resources already engaged in our communities to be able to put something new into action. Because they were also, this was a surprise to everybody, how quickly we had to move. And I think the other person is the United Way of Delaware. I think the United Way of Delaware and the Longwood Foundation, the Delaware Community Foundation, immediately they jumped into action knowing that our communities, our poor communities, we were already behind. And with this, we have fallen further into a hole. And then if you look at the undocumented population, that is the population that the Latin American Community Center serves in addition to other Latino members, the undocumented population, although they are essential services. And they work to, you know, pick the mushrooms or pick the tomatoes or cut the chicken or work in plants that, work in jobs that really nobody else wants to do. And we knew that this population was going to be the front, the face of the workers, of the essential workers. And this population, if they did not have a job, they would not be able to afford the opportunity of the stimulus that came from the federal government solely because they do not have a social security number. Although the federal government gives them an IT number where they can work with the IT number and pay taxes. They can use the IT number to pay taxes, state and federal taxes. They are not eligible for any benefits. They're not eligible for food stamps. They're not eligible for emergency assistance. They were not eligible for the stimulus that came down from the federal government. And even if they were eligible because they were U.S. citizens, if in their family, it was a mixed status family where one member of that family did not have a social security number, the entire family was disqualified. So these were people that were not able, were not going to be able to receive assistance from anywhere. This is where United Way of Delaware jumped in immediately, established a Fondo de Alivio, which is Immigrant Relief Fund, to provide rent assistance and emergency assistance and food assistance to this undocumented population that, number one, was testing higher than any other community because they live in such close quarters. And, you know, I can tell stories about some families where even a one-year-old was diagnosed as positive. And this is a population that is very, very in need, very vulnerable. And we knew as a 50-year organization that this was something that we needed to jump on immediately. The importance of people coming together in partnerships to wrap these services around this community was very important. The other thing that the Latin American Community Center did was we immediately, when the governor decided that childcare centers needed to close, just like everything else, we immediately applied to become an emergency childcare provider, which would allow the population that we serve and those essential workers to have childcare while they continued to work, those that still had jobs. And this was very important because that was also the sustainability of an organization that has been in the community for 50 years. So delivering the emergency child center, delivering food to those most in need, providing an emergency place where people can come and talk to a doctor virtually, where they can be tested, and provide funds, crisis funds for this population was very important to us. And I was just so proud. Well, I wasn't surprised with my staff because they're incredible. I have a group of staff at the Latin American Community Center that they are unbelievable. So they also jumped into action and provided, put into place these services and these wraparound services that this population needed. And we also knew that community engagement involving the community, get them to participate, get them to understand the importance, the danger of this virus, what they needed to do, how they needed to do, and the cooperation that was going to be necessary for them to help us with was very important. So immediately, everything and anything that the city needed, the group that Hanifa talked about, anything that they needed translated into Spanish, that was a service that they... that was a service that the Latin American Community Center immediately provided free of charge. And I have to again thank that wonderful staff of mine at the Latin Center because they didn't ask why, they just asked when. When do you need it? So I am deeply grateful to the city for including the Latino community around the table. Because I think it's important that every voice is heard. Because if you do not have diversity around the table, you're not going to get the kind of information that you will get from the community that is diverse, such as the City of Wilmington is. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate it. And I hope people have questions.
And thank you so much, Maria. And, you know, that's why we are really excited about the work that's coming out of all of this collaboration. As you mentioned, a couple of other organizations, United Way, our healthcare, our health systems, our various hospitals. And as the city be ensuring that we're at that tables, hearing from the community and a mobilization team, we knew that it would, we learned that, you know, being able to communicate the information that was happening, such as the LACC being a stationary clinic. How does a community know that if they're not on Facebook or something? So, you know, Mayor, I would just thank you for engaging your beautification team. So when they finished their regular work, we have commissioned them to work and put a flyers in the doors of the various neighborhoods where there's going to be a assessment site. We have some coming up tomorrow over in Pulaski. And we have some coming up in other areas that is too many to mention now. But it's because of all of us coming together, pooling up resources, and listening to one another, you know, and hearing what the community needs are. And with no question of hesitation, we put those gentlemen out on the street. We made the door-to-door flyers. We put it in everyone's door. And, you know, and we will continue to provide these necessary resources to ensure that our community gets past this pandemic and prepares us also for the upcoming recovery that we know we have to face. And one of the other things we know is so important, and not only just the health perspective of how this pandemic has addressed us. And we've come up, we've got the means of communicating to the community. We have the assessment sites that are coming on board. And in fact, the marked one tomorrow at Pulaski is going to be the first one that's being used for the universal testing that no matter whether you're symptomatic or not, you will get tested for the virus. So this is some of the efforts that in advocacy of our working group. And I know we might get on some people's nerves because, and we have meetings on the whim because we have issues that have to be addressed. But it's the result of our collective work that is taking care of our citizens here in Wilmington during this pandemic. So again, I thank all of you for your continuous participation. And now we know importantly of all, as our schools were closed, our schools closed down. And it gives me great pleasure to bring our next presenter, Ms. Terri Lawler, the Delaware Department of Education Associate, and also longtime founding member of the Wilmington Community Advisory Council. Terri has been at the table with us since the very beginning of the Wilmington Community Advisory Council, lending her expertise and doing some magnificent, magnificent things. I've got a great grant for the state to address some of the issues and recommendations that came through the CDC investigation. And I got so much to say about Terri, but I would just wanted to just thank you, Terri, for joining us and sharing your knowledge about the education factor here in dealing with the COVID pandemic. So, Terri, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Shabazz, for having me and Mayor Przywicky. And I'm just thrilled to serve. And I have to say that grateful to live in a community that really cares about children, cares about education, and is doing all that we can to roll up our sleeves and support each other during this time. What's been really amazing to see over the years, you know, when we started the work, looking at the CDC's report and started the work on resilience in our community, we started out with lots of partnerships. We recognize that it's not work that one organization can do alone. So the Delaware Department of Education has worked so well, I believe, with the Wilmington Advisory Council, as well as Delaware State Education Association, United Way. We have committed to making the learnings that we were using in our schools available to our after-school partners, community centers, because we know that children and youth function in a number of different systems. And if we want to make an impact with them, we have to roll up our sleeves and link arms with everyone who loves and cares about them. And so I think the real blessing, you know, like Ms. Matos said a minute ago, you know, we sprung into action in mid-March, but fortunately had some infrastructure in place that allowed us to partner and pull from so that we could support our students. Very early on, our focus was on meeting basic needs and making sure that we were able to provide lunch and meals for students who relied on those supports, making sure that they were in safe places. Through lots of partnerships, I believe we fed about 51% of the students in our state. And while that's truly remarkable, my hope is that we leave this embracing an opportunity to dig into some root causes for why that is and continue to partner to make opportunities available to eradicate poverty in our community. And I know that's something that's important in the city. And I know, you know, that's constantly something that our city government is looking at. But just a huge reminder to me, as we continue to make sure that our students are connected, protected, and respected. During this crisis, we have extended our trauma-informed practices work. We really made sure there were learning opportunities available for our educators. Over the last eight to nine weeks, we've had ongoing professional development around the brain science of trauma, looking at intersections of inequality and disparities in our communities, in our school communities, ways that we can support students' dysregulation, and making sure that in addition to being physically healthy, that we created engagement opportunities that met their emotional and psychological needs as well. We focus on co-regulating with teachers so that we are able to respond to student needs and continue, even in a virtual space, to build resilience and opportunities for engagement. We, as of yesterday, have announced three committees. There is a Health and Wellness Committee, an Academics Work Group, and an Operations Work Group that will be looking specifically at strategies to connect us once the pandemic is over. How are we going to embrace and reopen, embrace our students and reopen our schools? And we're already thinking about those things. But as the mayor said, right out of the gate, we are going to have to be very nimble. This is uncharted territory for us. And we're educators around the country. So we are gathering resources and learning as much as we can from other states and other countries so that we can do this in a way that not only meets the needs of our students and families that we serve, but also is respectful of the needs of our educators. We are eager to continue to build partnerships, deepen our understanding, and plan for social and emotional learning opportunities so that we are designing ways for our students to connect and heal, but also for our educators. This is, you know, it matters who you go through challenges with. And so while this is definitely an area of need, we want to support our students, we also have to support the educators who are supporting them. And so we are doing our best to not only create learning opportunities, but also identify strategies that will deepen relationships among our staff, but also build opportunities for us to flex and stretch our resilience wings so that we are modeling good coping skills and supporting our young people. Through this time, we have had online opportunities for our parents to learn about the social-emotional learning supports in our schools, as well as a lot of our mindfulness work. And I bring that up, one, because, you know, we are so grateful for our families and caregivers who jumped into the space to support education for students. We know that it's not easy, being mom, dad, caregiver, and educator in one day. But to this month in particular, lighten some of that load, we have offered mindfulness sessions for families on Mondays and Wednesdays at 9:00 a.m., Mondays at 4:00 p.m., and Wednesday evenings at 7:00 p.m. And they are going on for the entire month of May. We'll also have a schedule that we'll be able to share for the month of June. One of the reasons why our mindfulness work is so important is because we recognize that breathing and relaxation are portable skills. We need them to stay regulated and to get along with other people. More importantly, they build resilience in the physical body. There's a great book, Bessel van der Kolk says that "the body keeps the score." And so when we're thinking about some of the health disparities that are going on in our Black and Brown communities, we realize that a lot of that is related to generational trauma and generational challenges. And so as much as possible, we want to teach skills that help us get some of that stress out of our physical bodies. And our state has embraced the mindfulness work because the vagus nerve runs throughout the entire body and it touches every single organ. And so it's a way for us to relax and rebound in the midst of challenging situations. Those are skills that our young people are learning in school. They're sharing them in the community. And as much as possible, we want to share that work with families so that all of us together can become stronger emotionally and be able to support youth as we move through these challenging days. So we are extremely grateful for all of the partnerships and grateful to be able to share some of the work that we're doing to make our community stronger, but our children stronger.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Terri. And you reminded me of our own mantra that we have with the WCAC to protect, respect, and connect our young people. So thank you for that reminder. And with the understanding that we're still dealing with the trauma, this epidemic of the trauma that's facing our Black and Brown community, that with that comes the stress of the pandemic also. And with that, we know that comes with families that have no way to relieve themselves from that could possibly result to more domestic violence and other types of abuse. And so knowing that that could be a great possibility, we thought it was important to have someone from the Delaware Coalition for, again, Delaware Coalition Against Domestic Violence, Ms. Mary Ann Kenville-Moore, to share with you, you know, identifying overcoming this domestic violence of any type while we're going under this stay-at-home order. Mary Ann?
Thank you so much for this opportunity to join you all during this town hall meeting. It's a true pleasure. And I am so grateful to the comments that everyone has shared this evening. I've learned quite a bit in terms of the funding, and I'm looking forward to doing that advocacy with you all and trying to make sure that we can have resources in our state to meet the needs. But just so, so grateful for the work that is happening with our community partners and trying to provide the best resources and support because in the end, we are all in this together. None of us is being protected completely from this despite our isolation because we know even in that isolation that things can be difficult for people. And as we've heard tonight, there are so many challenges that many people are experiencing. And so those challenges, as you were mentioning, President Shabazz, those challenges can create additional stress in families that perhaps will lead to violence. We also know with the stay-at-home order that many more families have fewer opportunities to seek safety or seek help and support. And so that also has been something that, from the beginning of the state of emergency, our coalition has been working with our partners like Child Inc. and the LACC and Community Legal Aid, Delaware Volunteer Legal Services, the Delaware Center for Justice, and the YWCA to identify what needs are. And again, we can work as a state and as a community to end violence when it happens. But we also recognize that preventing violence, that by providing the various types of support that people have to prevent violence from ever happening are so very important. And so our group of partners, including the work that's happening at the Wilmington Community Advisory Council, have been looking to ways that we can not only ensure that the important services that are currently being provided are being provided in a way that addresses the needs that people have with COVID-19 and risks of that. And so very quickly, our, many of our programs were able to move to remote working. Our legal services moved very quickly and worked with family court to ensure that we were able to have protection from abuse orders and emergency hearings available still to the public, working to make sure that the evictions and concerns about the moratoriums and eliminations, perhaps in the future of what's going to happen when the moratorium on evictions happens. How can we help people now avoid those civil proceedings in the near future? That those are issues that are real for families. And so we wanted to make sure that the community knew that our services were open and available because some of the things that we've learned over the last couple of months has been that law enforcement continues to respond to domestic violence calls for help at about the same rate that it had been pre-COVID-19. And we also know, though, that the many other crimes are decreasing at the same time. And so we know that domestic violence is happening still at fairly high levels and that violence unfortunately is still, in many cases, very significant. But that the calls to the hotline haven't risen to the level that we thought they may. And we began to analyze that a bit. And we quickly discovered that if people were stuck at home and didn't have access to private communication, that we would never be able to perhaps help those individuals. And so through the advocacy of the Attorney General, we were able to secure cell phones that we can now provide to people in our community privately so that they can have a mechanism to communicate with the outside world. We were also able to work with our shelters and make sure that we had social distancing in place. And so those confidential shelters that people perhaps would be concerned if they were crowded in the same room, we are now able, through the support of some of the federal dollars that we are anticipating, where that this Criminal Justice Council was able to provide. And then now with the CARES Act money coming in and a grant that we received through the Delaware Community Foundation, that our shelters are able to place people in hotels and provide case management services remotely, make sure that people have food and have the support, the social and emotional pieces that Terri had mentioned, so that we're able to connect them to counselors that are able to provide virtual services. And we also are able to do this at our YWCA. They're providing a whole host of services to people. And one of the areas that we are fortunate with here in the state is the collaborations we have around financial support and sustainability. And we know that financial issues are going to be impacting our families for a much longer period, perhaps, than some of these stay-at-home orders will be. And so we've been making sure that our programs have available flexible funding streams so that if individuals need assistance with rent, if they need assistance with food, if there are utility bills that... if they need assistance with food, if there are utility bills that, that have gotten, you know, back delayed, we, we want to make sure that people can move out of this crisis effectively. And so we've included our hotlines here so that people know that our services are available. But also our website, which provides a variety of information, not only about the hotline services, but also about some of the strategies that we're using to make sure that our, our programs are safe and that people feel comfortable reaching out to us. Because we have heard that many people are concerned about calling the police or calling for service because of their fear of being exposed to the virus or perhaps what will happen to their partner that they love and care for. If I make my partner leave, where will they go? And so we want to make sure that we can support people and, and work with their families throughout. And also working, looking forward to the work that we will be doing with Wilmington Community Advisory Council, the City of Wilmington, and others, our coalition partners in providing those summer supports for youth and looking at ways that we can build their resilience so that violence doesn't become part of their story as well. We want to make sure that moving forward, people in the state of Delaware have the best opportunities. And so really appreciate the chance tonight to talk with you all.
Well, thank, thank you, Mary Ann. And I'd like to thank everyone on the panel for all of that great information that I'm quite sure it's been, is, was useful to our viewing audience. And that's the whole purpose. We wanted to have these virtual town halls was to keep everyone abreast. And I hope that they've learned mostly too about the various levels of government and how we're all in this together, what our roles responsibilities are, what you can expect out of those, those members of government that represent you on the local level, county, as well as the state and our federal delegations. With that, I know, I hope that you may have some great questions for us. And with that, I'll turn it over to our moderator for any upcoming questions from our listening audience.
We have a question for the mayor. Mr. Mayor, you and your administration have spent a great deal of time focused on neighborhood revitalization, addressing housing issues such as blight, and trying to bring businesses into the city. Considering this pandemic, how has this affected your plans?
Well, obviously, obviously at one level it hurts because it's just stopped the economy in place. But I think that, I think I was moved by something Terry said earlier. It's something we've all thought about. We have to use this, we have to use the opportunity of things slowing almost to a halt to reimagine what the city can be and then think about, think about what we can do to change things. We have problems, we have problems in our neighborhoods. But, but as Terry had mentioned, they're root cause problems. And we always, we spend all of our time chasing symptoms. We try to fix all the symptoms of the problem. But the root causes frankly are very, very, they're very challenging. And I think most people, most people aren't, I guess courageous enough to take on the big ones because they are really hard, hard challenges. But I think, I think this gives us an opportunity, members of council, the administration, to have honest conversations about what we can do to make our communities healthier, make our neighborhoods essentially better, not just superficially better. But what, what do we do to strengthen the, the folks who live there? What do we do not just to fix the neighborhoods, but to help improve our neighbors? And so that's where I look at this. I look at this as like a big opportunity. We're doing a lot of things for our businesses so that they're staying on their feet. So when things come back, they're going to be ready to come back in business again. But I look at our neighborhoods and realize nothing is changing. And we have to take this opportunity, this, we have this, this pause forced on us. We have to use this as an opportunity to make our neighborhoods better or, or shame on us.
Thank you. Madam President, your work with the WCAC brought to bear the fact that there is so much work that needs to be done on our, to level the playing field for the least among us. Even though COVID-19 is the current crisis, gun violence, crime, poverty, and lack of opportunity still prevail. How do we focus the conversation on the things that really matter to make us a better society?
Well, I think this pandemic has made us focus on those things that really matter. Food, clothing, shelter, education. The fact that those, those essentials of life have been hindered in our ability to be able to provide for ourselves for them. And then when you see that those that are dealing with the, the, the epidemic of violence also and all the inequities and disparities, that this pandemic did not go to any one particular class, but it hit, it hit those vulnerable populations even, even harder. So in us trying to now to address this pandemic, you know, across the board, we have to keep, we have to know that we not, just don't, can deal with the pandemic. But we also have to still address the epidemic and the inequities and disparities that are plaguing the community in order to bring back healing for anybody and for everybody. So, you know, just bringing that conversation back to just the basics, life essentials for everyone and equity across the board has to be the, the conversation of as we, if we're going to make it out of this pandemic.
Can I add something to that, Madam President?
Please, please do.
I, I also think that this virus, this, this pandemic has caused us, has caused leadership in the state to surface. So, you know, if we didn't think that there was leadership in different communities, the leadership has risen to the top. And, and we have people around a table that have never been there before. So I think that if we use what we have erected, what we have developed during this crisis and continue to use it as a force to be reckoned with, I think that we can hit the root cause of problems like the mayor says. Does it take, it takes community.
Well, your, your point is well, was well taken because even when the pandemic hit, the, the Wilmington Community Advisory Council was called upon to assist in addressing this and engage in the community because of us having such a large collaborative of partners. And because we had so many different partners with such a diverse group of skill sets and support services, we were able to put into place, you know, how do we address this on, for our most vulnerable communities so quickly, a plan of action to address it that would have taken months to figure out. And so we were able to put that into place. So now you see that there are the testing sites and, and the other resources and things put in place instantly because of us already having that, that mechanism in place. And I think just now that we're at the table, there's no way that we're ever going to leave the table.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I just want to add that, you know, I think as a community, we're only as strong as our weakest link. So we have to work together, that what affects one affects all of us. One of the things that we've talked about a lot in the advisory council is that feeling that, you know, the council can't do the work just like the city council can't do all the work or the LACC can't be responsible. It's going to require all of us coming together as a community. And one thing that I guess I've noticed through this process is when we think about trauma and how it impacts our problem solving and our thought processes, we've all been through a traumatic experience. We're in the midst of a traumatic experience. But the things that we know about the brain, we're going to have to calm the brain so that we can engage our problem solving. And recognizing that for some of our communities that have had extreme amounts of crime and ongoing gun violence, there could have been a numbing effect. So we might need to help people get back into their problem solving mode so that we can come to the table and start thinking clearly about what the needs are and how we can work together so that we can all live a purposeful life. But I don't thrive if my neighbors aren't thriving. And I think that's a thought process and a mindset that we have to have, we have to leave this experience with so that we can come together to do what's right for all of us.
And you've seen that, you've seen that in the community. People that, that do not have a lot, but share what they do have. I mean, the amount of food drives that has happened across the state, neighbors helping neighbors. I mean, in the, in the Latino community, I, I was like, it was mind boggling to see all the donations from the, the, the Latino stores and, and community leaders that have risen to help those that, that needed. I mean, they were in need, but they were also helping the other people that were in need because of what you just said. I'm not thriving if you're not thriving. And I think that's a, that's a good philosophy to have. I thrive, you thrive, we thrive together.
That's right.
As we're talking, as we're talking, go ahead, I'm sorry, Madam President. As we're talking about neighbors helping neighbors, I'll put this out to Ms. Lawler first, but then others can join in. How do we support those parents that are struggling to educate their kids and to keep them occupied during this pandemic? We know that there are some children or some parents that aren't comfortable with being homes, being teachers and trying to work and, you know, take care of the, the household needs. So how do we as neighbors support those neighbors?
But I think, one, it requires some honest reflection. When I was raising my daughter, I didn't want to be teacher and parent. Okay, that's a hard thing to do. And my feeling was, okay, I, I have my job. When I come home, I just want to be mom. And, and, but we are forced into a situation right now. So as much as possible, I think it's important for us to acknowledge the challenges that are inherent in that forced situation. But recognize that it's such an opportunity to get to know a different side of our, our kids right now. So maybe setting, setting some goals. Kids thrive in relationship and having routines. So recognizing the best time of day to approach different work opportunities. You know, while the lesson might be taught virtually at 10:00 AM, maybe a nice sunny day, this is the time that we're going to do the, we will get the information online. But we'll come back to the lesson in the afternoon after we've had some playtime. Movement is so important. So building in a, I think a schedule first off and having some solid routines, but also recognizing the differences between our children and when they're most productive. And more than anything, maintaining that supportive relationship. We don't want this to be a strain on families. We want to be able to support them in this hard work, but not have it be a strain.
And I, if I could just follow up, one of the resources that is listed in our website is information about Child Inc.'s Warm Line. And there are many other services like that where parents can call and talk to other parents and just get that support if they don't have a family member or friend that they feel comfortable talking with. I was very fortunate to have my parents throughout most of my parenting years. And so when I would get overwhelmed, I would call them. But I've also relied on my girlfriends through the years to help get me through these moments. And I know that there are many social media groups where people are finding support as well. And so if you don't feel like you have the support you need, recognize that that's easy for us to help provide that connection to people who care and can provide you with resources and, and so that you don't feel as isolated with the work. But it is very difficult. I know I have a senior myself and it's been a difficult year for us to transition from working at home and taking classes. So a lot of empathy out there right now with many parents struggling with so much of the same thing.
Then, and then you have the parents that have never had formal schooling or very little schooling, do not speak English, may not be computer literate. So those are the parents that, that really have a difficult time. And I think one way of reaching those parents is to identify what media they use. What's, what's their form of communication? Because what may work for you and for me, that we're English speakers, may not work for a family that is an English speaking. You know, I'm, I'm in Facebook pages with Latino groups, everything in Spanish. So we have to identify, just like we created a table of a diverse group of people, we also have to understand that not everyone is on Facebook or we have to identify where that social media for this particular group of parents is and use that media as a form or as a way of communicating with those parents.
I'm glad you mentioned that because plain old reaching out and touching people with the phone or sending a card, I mean, tho- those are great ways to be in contact right now.
And if I could, I know we have so many different solutions that we probably can offer, but I just would like to tell the listening audience, you, please don't hesitate to reach out and, and, and say that under this pressure and this stress that we're all under, all of us are going through so many different things that there's a 211 number that you can call for different types of help. For educational help, we have an educational tele, TV station on 965 where you can get, where there's ongoing recommendations and suggestions for parents of how to help during this pandemic. Reach out to each other. This has been such a great conversation. I hate to bring it to an end. I don't know how many more questions we might have, but if you, I'd like to give one more, one more question. And with those of you have, we did not get a chance to answer your question, please, we will take note of them, get, respond to you with those questions. And even from our last town hall, the questions that did not get answered, you can find the answers on WilmingtonCityCouncil.com's website. So with that, moderator, do we have one last question?
Yes, and this question is for the mayor and the council members. We know that you are following the lead of the governor as you should. However, what are you doing to make sure that Wilmington's collective voice is heard? We are the largest city in the state and drive Delaware's economy. Shouldn't that mean we get the most attention?
I well, if you ask, if you ask the people at DELL dot, at the Housing Authority, if you ask people at Economic Development, they'll tell, they'll tell you that Wilmington gets more than its fair share. And of course, we, we're always asking for more because Wilmington has structural issues that other places don't have. Not the least of which is this age, which means aging infrastructure, sewer and water, roads, our utilities, we have to deal with things that other people don't have to deal with. You know, we've, we're the only, we've got the only professional fire service in the entire state. We've got the sewer and the water plant. We have, we have a remarkable city, but it's a city that needs some support because over the years, we have lost a lot of the flexibility that other places have, namely our ability to annex property, which over the years would have meant so much to us in building our tax base. But I would say this to you, the governor, the governor of our state lives in the city, highly supportive of the city. Both United States senators live in the city. Our county executive lives in the city. These are all folks who are highly sympathetic to the city. They understand it. And I must tell you, my relationship with all of these individuals is outstanding. And Lisa Blunt-Rotchester spent an entire life in the city and I think she moved 100 yards out of it a little while ago. But we have, we have folks who really care for us and really want us to see us survive. I think what they always want is to see that the money that we get from the state is spent wisely, that we behave responsibly. And I will tell you that I feel strongly, that's, that's the way they feel about the, the government today. So I take your point, it's a good one, but we don't get short shrift. We're treated pretty respectfully.
And I would just like to just add that, you know, we are, as small as we are, one thing that we found even with, when we was trying to pull together to work with the, to deal with the epidemic of the violence, was that we still all work in silos. I think in your question, you asked it by Wilmington's collective voice, trying to get that voice collectively together so that we all speak, you know, one voice on behalf of the benefit of the city of Wilmington is, is, is one voice on behalf of the benefit of the city of Wilmington is 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 an effort that we all are working on. Um and so I think this pandemic has caused us to come together and to put our voices together um and to speak one voice so that we could speak to our governor and to our congressional delegation to say, this is what Wilmington needs. It's not just me saying it, but it's us collectively as a city. And all, and all of this diversity, speaking on behalf of all segments of the city, our most vulnerable, our seniors, our those who don't have a voice, um I think that's what's coming out of all of this. So we're working hard. I mean, just having this town, virtual town hall meeting is another mechanism of how we are working and encouraging our citizens to share with us what, how this pandemic is affecting you. So that when we do go to talk to our governors and other levels of government, that we're speaking in a collective voice. So you know, we're we're working diligently on it, and the more we hear from you, the better we're getting at making that voice collective. So uh with that, um I know, like I said, the time is short and I did, I think, um, oh, I don't know, somebody was trying to say something.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, Council President. I just wanted to kind of dovetail and and I I think you um, you you are mayor, really hit the right tone. And what I want to emphasize to the public is just how much we are pushing. You know, uh from the beginning, we were pushing for the, you know, racial data, and the state gave it to us, you know. Uh we're pushing for this additional funding. Um and it's coming soon, you know. So, you know, definitely being, the community being involved with us will help. One thing we're going to need that the community has helped with is this assessment regarding renters and homeowners. Uh we just simply don't have the data about um what the need is out there. And and so we're looking for those answers about um what percentage of our population has actually been hit um by this crisis and and it is, uh you know, they're, they're, they're either unhoused right now or they're teetering on the edge. So um you coming to us will definitely help us, and we're going to be working with the universities to look at this data because we're going to make sure we come out of this stronger. We don't want to be right where we were before the crisis. We want to be even stronger as the mayor, council president, everyone has said. Now it's time to focus on the building blocks that have been overlooked, frankly, um you know, time after time. So now we have the tension of the state. Now we have the tension of the county. So we're going to put that to good use.
Well, with that, again, I thank all of the panelists for joining us today. Um I thank all of you for tuning in to this virtual town hall. I hope that you've learned something um and that if it's, if this has engaged any questions, that we look forward to hearing from you. Um stay tuned for future town hall meetings because I'm quite sure as this pandemic unfolds, there's much more information we need to make sure that you know. Um and and again, any additional questions, please contact us WilmingtonCityCouncil.com. And with that, I'd like to bid you all good night and stay in place, wear your face coverings, wash your hands, and mostly be safe.
Carol.